Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 28, 2025 meeting of the Mettletown Borough Council. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was published in the Home News Tribune on December 18, 2024, posted in Borough Hall on file in the Clerk's office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied, and we happen to have with us the Commander of the American Legion Post 65 here. Walter Zawin, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Roll call, please, Ms. Supper.
Councilmember Branch.
I'm here.
Councilmember Janboi.
Here.
Councilmember Hyman. Councilmember Jethwani.
Here.
Councilmember Kandell.
Here.
Council President Delia.
Here.
Mayor Bush.
Here. Do you have a motion to open the agenda session?
I make a motion to open the agenda session.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It was an enthusiastic agenda session opening, I'll say. Anything for the agenda session?
I have nothing today, Mayor.
There's been nothing? Anything from anyone else? No? Okay, is there a motion to close the agenda session?
I make a motion to close the agenda session.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We are done with the agenda session, and we're going to start off with public comment. I'm just going to say this before, we have a budget. We have a budget hearing scheduled for June 9th, so tonight is going to be a presentation. So anything that anyone wants to say tonight on either the budget or, you know, although there'll be a presentation and it's designed to sort of be given tonight, and then you can, you know, ask questions and as emails, whatever, then obviously we'll have a public session on June 9th about that. Or the redevelopment plan. If there's something here, anyone here who wants to speak about the Arts District redevelopment plan? Or, you know, any other public comment that you might have, I know that the Commander wants to say a few words. So anything you may have, now's the time. We have a couple of, I think we have one other agenda for, I should say, for a second reading of an ordinance, right?
Yes, two.
Two ordinances, right. So there'll be that as well, but those are specific as to the ordinance. So again, public session is now open, anyone wishing to address the council, just name and address for the record, please. I'm sorry that was so complicated.
My name is Walter Zawin, I live at 218 Center Street, Mettletown, lived there since June 7, 194, 1974. I'm dating myself, it's the spirits behind me. And I'd like to make everybody aware that Carrie DeLode will be coming through Mettletown tomorrow night. I'm not sure exactly what time they will be here. We've been supporting them, it's a road march originally started at the Connecticut baseball field, but they moved their starting point to West Point, and they go from West Point on the road march all the way to Dallas, Texas, where they hope to be by Memorial Day, where they meet up with the other legs, the western leg that starts out of Seattle, Washington. My main reason for bringing that to attention tonight is because most people don't know that, and also because of the fact the organization contacted me, and I want to make everybody aware, there will be a bus parked by the American Legion once they arrive, and it's going to be there overnight from 8:00 PM till 8:00 AM, and then they'll be continuing on to New Brunswick. But again, it's an organization that was formed in 2011, and it's to honor all the fallen from the Trade Center and all the fallen veterans from that time in all the conflict, and also the EMST people, EMT people, the firefighters, the police officers that all have lost their life. And it's in support of them, and the marches are from various backgrounds. Some are former police officers, some are former veterans, some are former nurses, doctors, and the group continues to march. And again, we've been hosting them in Mettletown since 2017 as they marched through. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. We'll make sure we alert our police department to the presence of the bus, and we certainly appreciate that. Okay, hi, name and address for the record, please.
Maureen Cummings, 112 Maple Avenue. So what brings me out tonight is I've been watching various Borough Council meetings online, I've attended an occasional one, and I've had some deep concerns about the way certain residents are being treated when they come up to speak, and they don't necessarily agree with things that are happening in town, or, you know, the certain Democrat, you know, mantra that's happening. And for instance, about four months ago, maybe six months ago, an older gentleman got up to speak, and he just relayed concerns that some of the senior citizens were having in town about navigating the parking meters in town. And I was at home, I wasn't present, so I couldn't speak, but I was just really very, quite alarmed to hear how this gentleman was being treated. And then at the last council meeting, Mr. Flaherty, the way he was spoken to, and he doesn't need me to defend him, but I just was very taken back, Mr. Mayor, on how you, you know, spoke to Mr. Flaherty. And I just want to say, as Mayor of the town, you're the leader for all of us, not just the Democrats, but the Republicans as well. And I just want to urge you to, you know, really strive to work towards unity in our town. At this recent rally that was in town, the so-called Hands Off Rally, you gave a speech, and I wasn't there. I heard that some woman pulled the mask off another person who was attending. And, you know, many of us feel that these types of events in town, they invite divisiveness in town. They invite division rather than uniting us. Mr. Mayor, you spoke a couple of years ago at a rally in town promoting the 1619 Project, which is critical race theory, which divides us as a country. It sets whites against blacks, and it can divide a country, and it can divide a town, and it's not helpful. And I'm just here tonight to urge you to strive more for unity in our town, to strive to unite us rather than to divide us, because it's just not helpful, and it really concerns me about some of, where this could go in the future. Okay, so somebody had a mask pulled off of them, and the woman got a summons, you know, and, you know, she's, but instead of just accepting the summons, now I hear that she's trying to rally people to defend her in her bad deed and her misconduct. So like, I just don't want to see anything escalate, you know, to become even potentially more dangerous. It's just not a helpful thing, not a good thing, and once again, I would urge you, as our mayor, as our leader, to try to unite us and not to stir up division in our town.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Can I make a remark, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
It troubles me to say that the 1619 Project puts blacks against whites. I'm infuriated. That's all I've got to say, I just want that to be on the record. It's not true.
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, I have a lot of things I want to say, but I'd rather give other people the opportunity to speak at this point. I will just mention in response to Ms. Cummings' comment with respect to the gentleman with the parking meters, I know that we've never treated anybody with disrespect at the microphone with respect to parking meters. I recognize that you have criticism of me from last meeting with respect to the issue of Mr. Flaherty's comments, and I presume Mr. Flaherty will speak at this meeting as he has at every meeting before and since, he decided he wants to run for council and take advantage of that opportunity. But no one was disrespectful to anyone related to parking meters. Any other comments from the community?
Hi, guys, how we doing? Joe Stanio, Strong Mile Movers, business owner here on Main Street, 406 Main Street. I had a little unfortunate incident this past week where, driving my nice new pickup truck, I came in contact with one of your concrete flower planters that are placed precariously on the corners in the heart of town. It was early in the morning, so there was sun on one side and shadows on the other. It's concrete in color, it's concrete the same color as the sidewalk, I could barely see it. I'm in an F-350, so I'm up pretty high, and I clipped it, I cracked it, it was already cracked, it's apparently been hit multiple times, and I did some significant damage to my new truck, but I was upset, I was disappointed in myself for one for crashing, I took full accountability. And then people were asking me, well, why are they there to begin with? So I would like some clarity, I think I know, but that's just my assumption. But if I may remedy to try to prevent this maybe from happening again, simply painting them a brighter color? Or maybe make it into a community type of thing where we can make these into kind of art installations on the corners? To beautify the town, make them a little bit more apparent to a business owner like me, or anybody else for that matter, because I've heard people just clipped them and kept going. I hit it, I reported it, I asked when the next meeting was, and here I am a few days later, just trying to find something good out of something, albeit negative, and hope that it doesn't happen to anybody again. It can also enhance beautiful town of Mettletown. I've been a part of this community one way or another for the past 30 years. I love it here, that's why I own a business here, and I know many of you here, and I appreciate you just hearing my words today and taking into consideration, and I would love to be part of the project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And, you know, a lot of that work was done in the attempt to try to get increased pedestrianization, certainly, and I hear your feedback, and I, you know, it's on the record, and coming to a meeting is exactly the right thing to do, or send us an email, whatever you want to do, whatever you're most comfortable with, but we hear you.
I'm a face-to-face guy.
Well, I do know that about you, I've had that experience before in a good way, so I appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyone else from the public, does she know address to council? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Linda Van Der Schmitt-Lestella, 242 Ambly Ave. I am here in support of especially what happened last weekend in regard to the real activation of the Mettletown Art Center. There was such a spirit there. You could really feel the energy that those two new galleries and two new spaces brought. It really was very uplifting, there was a real sense of joy. The other piece of it, however, I would like to acknowledge, is that what we have in those two spaces, the Foma and Bob Dikin's new gallery, is a set of galleries that have a presence in historical buildings. The business of historical preservation and the arts really goes hand in hand. And I really want to make that very clear tonight. The fact that those spaces are cozy and warm and welcoming, there is a difference in those kinds of spaces. And so even as the forum and that whole area is being redesigned, and I applaud it all, but I want to bring to your attention the need for us to really be confirmed in our interest in being able to hang on to those historic pieces of architecture that we have throughout town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Listella. Any other comments from the public? Go ahead, Mr. Flaherty, Mr. Flaherty, okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Humming, I live on Ambly Avenue. And I have a question regarding the Halsey development, the parking. Now, as I remember, what, years ago, they tried to build a parking garage there before, but it was held up and it was passed by because of the water level. That there was, the water level was too high there for them to construct a garage. And then, so then they went across the railroad tracks and built at Woodmont. So my question to you is, has that question about water level been brought up before? Or do we have to get more of the people from Halsey Street and that whole area to come? Because they're the ones who told me about it, and I remember the whole thing about the water level. So I'm not in favor of the garage there, I would really like to just have open space, fine. And the other thing is, when the parties were talking about the apartments that were going to be there, and they were going to be for the low income and also for the veterans. Now, as I remember, well, it might be changing now, if you get money from the government, you have to give a percentage, or you have to make percentage of your apartments available to the low income. Don't remember anything about the military, but I was like wondering if in the development of Woodmont and in the Golton, was that mentioned that as a selling feature, that they would have apartments for the military? Well, forget about the low income, but I mean, just the question about the military and apartments for the military. Has anybody heard anything about it?
Is that, are those your questions?
Yeah, a little bit long, a little bit.
It's all right, no, I think I got your notes, I got notes down, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it for now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to try to just, so first of all, I don't, I was not the mayor at the time, but I understand that that wasn't necessarily the reason why there was a construction in Halsey. There's a number of factors as to why Woodmont became Woodmont on the other side of the Pearl Street parking lot, not to mention the amount of space that was there that allowed for things like the plaza and a larger building that was a little bit less dense. So, you know, the water level, from what I understand, didn't have anything to do with it, and of course, the water level's been discussed. You don't get this far into discussions about various projects without having engineering considerations like that. So yes, the water level is being considered, and in my understanding with the engineering is that when work like this is done, it typically improves the area with respect to issues like drainage and other engineering considerations. So I would presume that whatever gets done there, and we will make sure, obviously, that there's improvement to the area, including, for example, the Legion, which is, I know, a concern from some of the members, having met with them, and I know the Commander's here tonight, so that's the first thing. The second thing is with respect to the affordability, and it's not always for low income. I mean, the idea of affordable is a pretty broad definition under New Jersey law, and it relates to all different communities potentially in need of affordable housing. So for example, there are, you know, obviously veterans are a consideration for affordable housing, and something that's important, I know, to this council and me, but also, we're looking for potential opportunities to provide housing for disabled adults, which is something that's been very important to this council and me as well. And so we're looking to fulfill what you correctly described as a percentage and requirement of a project like this to have a set aside for affordable housing. But, you know, when you describe open space, what you're describing is an open asphalt lot, and, you know, this is the most, that's what's currently there, right? I mean, it's an open asphalt lot, as Pearl Street was, but there's not exactly grass there or free, you know, park for us to run around. So we want to make as productive a use of that space, and in the process, provide what we're looking for, which is a nest egg for the theater, because the theater in and of itself can only continue to operate if there is a sustainable source of revenue. And whether, you know, whether you like a parking garage or not, I'm not the biggest fan of parking garages per se, but having a parking garage allows for a stream of revenue that will allow the lights to stay on at the theater for the foreseeable future. That's what we're interested in, and of all the difficult choices, that's where we end up.
Okay, now, well.
I just want, because you told me that was your question. Is there a follow-up question?
Yeah, well, I mentioned like open spaces as compared to a garage, multi-story garage. I can see the birds going through, and then with your garage and all that kind of stuff, there's no open space for the birds. They have to go all the way around.
Okay.
So that's when, when you talk about open spaces.
That's what you mean.
It doesn't always have to be grass, it just has to be open so people can look across and not just look into somebody else's apartment or window.
Thank you.
You know about living in the city.
I appreciate.
Mettletown is turning into.
Well, we don't want to turn into a city, I appreciate what you're saying, but we do want a theater, so that's where we are in this. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. And I'll say just, and as you're sitting down, I'll just say that, you know, choices in this position are hard. You've got to, you know, you've got to put yourself in the position of making, you know, doing the most with what you possibly have, and, you know, there isn't a lot of space for something that could potentially sustain this theater. And so that's why this has taken as long as it has, but with respect to the space right now, as a result of the demolition of some of those, you know, old Victorians that lined Main Street, we now have a direct view, and maybe the birds have a place to fly, but we have a direct view of a very bizarre-looking substation that a lot of us took for granted, you know, we just assumed, you know, it wasn't there. Now we're very much reminded of the fact that that's there. So that's one thing that I've noticed, and at least something there will be able to block that view, which is, you know, something from a planning perspective. Other comments from the community? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Flaherty, I live at 44 New York Avenue, and my property is protected by security cameras. So I'm adding to my comments at the last council meeting.
I'm sorry, what did you say, what did you say, your property what?
Property is protected by security cameras.
Okay.
And I'm adding to my comments from the last council meeting when I detailed political crimes and intimidation in Mettletown, ranging from the vandalism of a Tesla to the stealing of campaign lawn signs, and residents being afraid to put political signs on their property. So the mayor's only response was that any discussion of political violence in Mettletown was outrageous. There was no expression of compassion for a significant segment of the town's residents. What was also shocking was the failure to defend the Constitution and the First Amendment of free speech. As elected officials, I, the mayor, and the council members declared in the oath of allegiance to do so. The failure to condemn acts of political intimidation only emboldens criminals to continue them. In fact, one day later, after the last council meeting, two campaign signs were stolen from a residence at the corner of Route 27 and Grove Avenue. I filed a police report, and I thanked the Mettletown Police Department for their support in stopping these crimes against the First Amendment. The two signs have been replaced, and security cameras now guard them. Now, something I didn't bring up, but Ms. Cummings did bring up, is to mention that we had political violence occur at the Hands Off protests here in Mettletown. A videographer was assaulted by a protester, a Mettletown resident, who ripped the face mask off the videographer. Now, this resident must appear in court this Friday, and for some reason, the charge is only a public nuisance, even though there was physical assault. These are all the comments I wanted to share tonight, and I don't have any questions for the council.
Thank you. I'm not going to respond specifically to a matter that is involving our municipal court, it's not my place to do so. But I will say, Mr. Flaherty, that, you know, there's no tolerance for any sort of intimidation or vandalism or, you know, physical confrontation in our community. I mean, everyone deserves to feel safe, no matter your beliefs, whether you're on the left, on the right, neither. Wherever you are, everyone in this community deserves to feel safe. But I will say that words matter, and perspective matters. And when you take random acts of bad behavior, because what you've described is terrible behavior, and you label them as political violence, it diminishes what the term political violence actually means, you know, to history, to people, to democracy. I mean, you know, there are people who live through political violence, there are people who are threatened for their, you know, for their beliefs, for their votes, for their perspectives, and, you know, political violence isn't a stolen lawn sign. Political violence isn't, you know, being bullied on social media as you described at the last meeting. It's when people are hurt or killed for their beliefs, or threatened for their beliefs. And, you know, what Josh Shapiro faced on Passover to the governor's mansion in Pennsylvania, that's political violence. You know, what happened in Charlottesville, Pennsylvania, that's political violence. What happened to President Trump in Butler, Pennsylvania, that's political violence. You know, January 6th, that's political violence. But being bullied on social media, as you described, as political violence in the last meeting? I mean, and I'm sorry to call the council members out here, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but how many of you have been bullied on social media? Not really, I mean, this, I'm curious, show of hands, how many of you have been bullied on social media? All right, I'll put my hand up, too. Mr. Flaherty, you want to be on this council, you're running for council. You've been coming to meetings consecutively since, I don't know when, since you've decided, I guess, that you're running for council. But you want to be up here? You want to be sitting up here, you want to ask voters to support you? You've got to have thicker skin, because, you know, instead of playing the victim in this situation, I would say that maybe we should continue to focus on keeping our debates spirited and lively and on the issues. But to describe what happens in Mettletown, New Jersey, as political violence, I'm going to say what I said at the last meeting, it's outrageous. Any other comments from the community?
Clearly, clearly, we're just concerned.
Excuse me, Ms. Cummings, you've already spoken, I'll let you speak one more time, but I just want to make sure that for the record, we have one time each, but go ahead.
Okay, well, we're real concerned about where things could go, okay? We've seen evidence of it with somebody's mask being pulled off their face, you know, and we just, we just need a mayor who, you know, leads us properly, okay? And so, you know, obviously, you have every legal right to go on and have your rallies, go ahead, make your speeches. Actually, you're just helping the Republican Party, you're really helping us, so keep it up, keep it up!
Thank you.
There'll be a lot more people here angry and upset.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Like, you know, Ms. Cummings, Ms. Cummings, I'll just say this to you, you know, I wasn't going to say anything because, you know, this is a meeting that's supposed to be civilized, and we're going to do our very best to do that, but we are a Borough Council and mayor who's for everyone, that's our responsibility. And if you agree with the things I say or don't agree with the things I say, that doesn't mean I'm not supporting the entire community. But when I receive emails from people like you, where you've said specifically to me, "The letters in the LBGTQ plus AIA acronym keep growing and becoming more and more disturbing. I'm aghast to see how the trans movement has become like a cult." Those were your words.
Absolutely.
Where are, excuse me, okay, okay, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
So you're going to go on, then you.
Ms. Cummings, it's my turn to speak, I gave you a second opportunity.
Okay.
Your time is done, your time is done, I appreciate your comments, I do. We don't agree, but I'm finishing reading your email to me, and your time at the microphone is over, thank you. So you read specifically, I should, I read in your email to me, that the trans. So, you read specifically, I should, I read in your email to me, that the trans movement has become like a cult where our children are being groomed to question their biological sex and experiment with life-changing drugs and operations. And, you know, I am just telling you that when I receive an email like that, that makes me feel like there are people in the community who are trying to stop other people in this community from living their lives. And I appreciate your concern and your disagreement with me. We are obviously not on the same page politically, but yes, I'm supporting everyone in this community, even though you and some of the people that you're here with apparently don't. So, thank you, and your time is over. Are there any other comments from the public at this time?
I'll be back the next meeting to talk about that.
Ms. Cervi? Yeah, the second reading, right, for the history ordinance? Yeah, we're going to have an opportunity for that in this, yeah. Any other comments not related to the history ordinance? No? Okay. Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to the budget presentation. Melissa and Becky, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, so, if anyone didn't know, it is the 125th birthday of Matutchen. So, we had to get this cool logo on because the committee that was formed put this cool logo together, and I think everybody was getting tired of my bridge picture. So, here we go. Okay, so, here's the story this year. It's really about keeping things stable and making sure that we maintain that same level of continuity in our budget. So, the proposed budget for this year is $26.58 million. This reflects a local 1.57, our local increase from last year, to 1.6246 tax point increase. Now, we, we say this is just, we're not totally sure on this because Middlesex County has not struck their tax rate, okay? So, that's why there's a little ambiguity with that. Next, so what is our budget relying on this year? Well, 2.4 million in surplus funds, $250,000, our usual contribution from the Parking Authority, which is a separate organization. I know most people think we manage it, but it is under its own auspices. Then we have 1.5 million in state aid, another 1.8 million in fees, permits, licenses. We estimate that pretty conservatively as to what sorts of revenue from our construction. We don't have a lot of sources of revenue, but the Construction Office is a real focal point for those sorts of revenue streams. Then we also have, we put aside $430,000 for delinquent tax collection. And then we have about 1.1 million from grants and other sources. And the grants, you know, they come in not during all the time to meet our budget cycle, but that's about what we have so far. Then we have 17.8 million that is your municipal property taxes. I'm sorry, I'm just rounding so that everybody can understand. And then out of that, 1.1 million is the library property tax, which is municipally, it's state-mandated. That is an amount and a funding source that does not change. Where is your budget, where's your budget money going? So, this year, the 26.58 million, we have 19% in other sources, 19% going to pension, FICA, and insurance to keep the borough running. Then we have a reserve of uncollected taxes of about 6% of that 26 million. Public safety is 22%. Public works is 14%, and admin and professional services is 10%. So, that's how the whole budget, those are all the slices of the pie. Next, as we normally do each year, we do a year-to-year comparison that you can see. And as I'm sure you're all experiencing within your own, you know, homes and financial situations, things, things have gone up. So, we have salary and wages that have gone up from 8.9 million to 9.5. Most of that is contractually obligated for our union workers, which are primarily our DPW and our police department. Then we have our debt, and our debt increased this year from 1.6 million to 2.5 million. The reason for that was because in 2023, we had some pretty big projects that we, that we organized and moved forward with, one of which was the Egger turfing of the field, which is all completed. The other was the Emergency Services Center, which we just went out to, it's on the street right now, and we're looking for contractors to bid on, on the project. So, those two projects were pretty significant in terms of the amount of capital monies that we needed. And now, this year, with floating, we usually go out to the market, and we initially take notes out, and then we go out to the bond market, and we compile all of our debt, and we do that sporadically. It's not every year that we do that. And with that, we have about $900,000 that has come on as debt for those two massive projects that we have undertaken. Healthcare costs, we are self-insured healthcare, so it really depends on, we have stop-loss insurance, which helps us, but we pay per claim. So, sometimes you have, if you have a couple people that are really ill in a year, unfortunately, we get hit. This year wasn't terrible, but it wasn't great. We see normally what happens, we have two years where it might increase, and then two years where it goes flat. So, there is some, some cycle to it, but this year, we did see a bit of an increase there as well. And then pensions, which is state-mandated, again, for all full-time employees. Okay, so where are your taxes going? So, we're going to look at a property tax, oh, excuse me, we will look at a assessed value of $300,000 on a home in Matutchen. And again, remember, this is assessed value, it's not market value, okay? Because the, the, the selling rates right now are incredibly high because of how desirable Matutchen is. So, out of that $300,000 assessed value, the, the increase for, the tax would be $21,498, which would be an increase of $633 from last year, okay? As we look at the pie here, the first piece is the Matutchen Public Library, which, again, I said is statutorily mandated, and every year, that's a set rate once the numbers come out. So, that's $303 of this pot of money that goes towards the library. $4,875 would go to the Borough of Matutchen. $3,138 would go to Middlesex County. And as, as normal in the state of New Jersey, because we fund education, $13,182 goes to Matutchen Public Schools. Okay, so, we also have a capital budget, and we need to put 5% down in the regular budget to fund our capital budget. And what are we putting in this year? First is, we're going to be doing a GIS mapping of stormwater and sewer systems. What does that mean? That means that right now, currently, we have nothing but paper maps for all the stormwater and sewer system infrastructure, where it's located and what have you. And this is desperately needed in order for us to, to, to map things out and not rely on paper. This was a long time coming, and it's much needed. The next is our usual road paving programs. This year, we are looking at paving approximately, we're spending about 1.5 million, 500,000 of which it comes from a grant from the New Jersey DOT. The three major roads that we're going to be looking at this year are Whitman, Spear, and Hollywood, and then there's a few other ancillary roads that are also included in that cost. And it's not just road paving in terms of milling and reconstruction, we also do sidewalks and curbing as well. The next are IT upgrades and security cameras. It's the way of the world now. We are dependent upon our computers and things and upgrading things. Also, we are becoming more and more reliant for security purposes on security cameras, and namely, the police have requested that we install some new cameras that are close to the Greenway. There's a lot of people who enjoy the Greenway, and for the most part, it's always a positive experience, but there are some concerns, especially with, with people in town using that as kind of a little escape route, as you will. So, this will just help the police continue to keep our community safe. Sewer infrastructure. Each year, we are setting, we started last year, correct, Becky? Two years ago. I was very, very concerned about our sewer infrastructure. It's, the community's very old, and, you know, replacing and doing things underneath the ground isn't something as sexy as building a theater or, you know, you know, catching everyone's eye and, you know, allure. But this is something that we need to consider. This year in particular, we had a significant unexpected sewer, sewer issue. Thankfully, it wasn't really, it was our line, but it wasn't in our town, and it was off in the industrial area, which was a total blessing. But, you know, all the infrastructure is older, and we're putting money away so that we don't get caught unexpectedly when we have these sorts of emergencies. And last, police, Department of Public Works, and fire, we always, the police this year are getting a vehicle and equipment. They have all sorts of gadgets that they have to maintain and, and, and keep as far, from a policing standpoint, everything's getting more technical. So, that's about $137,000. DPW, they have some, some equipment, and we always want to keep them at their prime and up to the level of what we can depend upon them for. So, that's about $115,000. And then fire, of course, they have a truck, some turnout gear, and other equipment that comes in around $363,000. So, what does that mean in terms of the general capital that we're looking to authorize? It's $5 million. 5% down payment on that is $255,000. And we're just saying again here, a big portion of that will be offset by the municipal New Jersey Transit every year, I mean, excuse me, New Jersey Department of Transportation. Every year, we get municipal aid from them to help do our, our streets and roads. And so, this year, we're looking to authorize about 4.2 million when you take out that grant of $506,000. So, that is it. There is the budget.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearlstein and Ms. Cuthbert, for your very hard work.
And, yeah, you just reminded me. I just want to thank you, the Finance Committee, which consists of Jason Delia, Vanita Jethwani, and also Dan Hirsch, who was ex-officio back there, our former councilperson. Without your help and input, you know, we're a team and we're able to make all of this work for everyone.
It's not, it's really not easy with the limited monies that we have right now, and I know that people don't necessarily, until you're on our side of things, appreciate just how much hard work goes into putting this together to balance things out.
And Becky Cuthbert, who's sitting here, CFO.
Oh, yes. I mentioned, I mentioned Ms. Cuthbert, for sure. She's the all-knowing CFO. But, but really, this is a, this is a team effort led by the two of you, and we really appreciate it. Are there members of the council who have questions or comments about the budget? We had a size, I was going to ask, if we could go back to the slide for some, I'm sorry, I waited for you to close the computer.
No, that's okay.
You had the slide up here with respect to, yes, that one, was the year-over-year change, which was how things have gotten to the increase. And I think that box in the bottom, I know you mentioned it, but I just want to talk about this because, obviously, the, you know, our friends at the school district passed three referenda last year, which led to a pretty substantial, you know, increase, at least by voter approval this year, at 372. The county went up 90, the library up 21. This is per average household. But, you know, the borough's 150. So, just to get an idea in terms of the overall year-over-year change, I appreciate, you know, how, people don't realize the percentage of the budget that comes from the borough side of things. And then people say, well, with everything that's going on, why is the, why is, you know, why are there still even marginal increases? And I guess the question I have is, why, why are there still some marginal increases? And maybe, Ms. Cuthbert, this is a better answer from you, coming from you, but why are there still some marginal increases, even though, obviously, we're taking in more, more property tax dollars than we ever have?
We do have marginal increases because, as we all know, prices go up. We have to pay for utilities, gasoline, salaries, insurances, et cetera. So, that is across the board on all of the governmental entities. We collect for all and then remit back. So, together, I know all parties, really, the school, the county, and the municipality work very hard to keep it level and balanced so that we don't do spikes. In my 25-plus years, I have never seen a county spike. That would be something that was, oh, grab your hat. You know, the borough always strives for the same. The library probably around, if I guessed, I want to think maybe 2012 came as a, shown separately. We've always paid the library tax. That is directly driven by what your net valuation taxable, all of your assessed properties. So, as we prosper as a town, and if we might have increased values, that library is not forgotten, it's statutorily protected to also keep pace. So, that's kind of.
I mean, so, what you're saying, I think, is, in a nutshell, is that if it weren't for the increases in property taxes that we've received from various sources, things would go up even higher. I mean, the percentage would be even higher.
Absolutely.
And people say to me in the street, they'll say, well, why are property taxes, you know, going up even though there's so much around that seems to be sourcing that? And my response usually is, well, my understanding is that this would go up even higher if we didn't have that.
That's correct.
To keep the same level of service.
Correct, correct. The, the ratables, they grow as, we are in a good fortune town. We have positive things. We're a growing community, we're a healthy community. So, that gives us that good support of your incremental increases in value that support services that cost more.
Okay.
Over time.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions, anybody? No?
I just, I just have to see something here. On the first page, I guess it's the first or second page where it says budget review. What are library property taxes? And why would, you know, there's like 1.113 million dollars from library property taxes.
So, the library tax has always been raised as part, it used to be included in the municipal piece. It's a statutory based on the value of all your properties. A certain percentage is set. I believe it's a third of a mill is the correct statutory term. So, as transparency and legislation have changed, that's why it's a carved-out number. So, it's absolutely apparent that your library is being supported by your tax dollars.
Right, and that's what they're getting from the collection of what we're taking in.
Globally on your tax bill, they will see that 1.1 million going directly to them for their operation.
Good. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, the public kind of, I know sometimes people get a little, you know, not confused, but, you know, to see where things are coming from and, you know, where it's going. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I love, and the pie chart is, you know, is excellent. And I wish we could find a way to get everyone to see that, where your taxes go. Nobody likes taxes, but this is how we live in the community that we do, and obviously, with your support, we'll continue for the year ahead. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, municipal budget presentation is complete. Council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of March 24th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I make a motion to approve Communications Consent Agenda, Items A through F.
Okay, there has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Ms. Cervi, would you please read Ordinance 2025-07 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-07, Ordinance Creating the Matutchen History Advisory Committee.
Okay. At this time, and there, I know there are people, because we had our good friend Nancy Zerby in the back, and there's others perhaps who may want to speak. We're going to open the public hearing with respect to Ordinance 2025-07. This is the creation of the Matutchen History Advisory Committee. Just name and address for the record.
Okay, yeah, I know. I want to get it to the right height. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Nancy Zerby, 81 Rector Street. I wanted to come because I'm sure by now Tyler misses me.
I do. We do miss you. That's real.
Well, hopefully you do in a few minutes, too.
We will, we will. It's okay. It's our job to hear. Go ahead.
Okay. After 16 years of having served on the committee that's being discussed in this ordinance, I'm certainly very pleased that the committee will finally be formally established and therefore legitimate. So that's, I certainly support the ordinance. However, I am concerned about the direction the committee, as reflected in the committee name, as well as the purposes stated in the ordinance. It does mention preservation once, it's preservation of resources without really saying, not sure exactly what resources. Metatchen indeed does have a wonderful history that is worthy of celebrating. In the federal system, that's my title, I'm a historian, I support it. But we also need to protect the built environment that reflects that history. People are attracted to Metatchen by its charm, character, quaintness, these are words that we often hear, but those terms don't come from the written history. They are in response to our built environment. I believe that people in Metatchen do care about historic preservation. I see it all the time on social media with groups such as Then and Now that showcase our borough's many historic houses. I also experienced it with the many, many positive comments my husband Pete and I received as a result of our renovation of 443 Middlesex Avenue. I mean, people we didn't even know were constantly coming up to us and thanking us. But that charming character can be lost if we don't prioritize both the appreciation for and protection of our historic buildings. When the Historic Preservation Committee was formed in 2008 by former council president Richard Weber, Metatchen lagged behind the pace of other communities in acknowledging the importance of historic preservation. The committee, some of them, few of the committee members are here too, the committee worked hard to address this issue, accomplishing Metatchen's first National Register Historic District, first historic preservation element in the municipal master plan, first preservation intern to work on updating historic sites inventories, first draft historic preservation ordinance, as well as coordination of multiple grants and public education programs focused on historic preservation. My concern is that if the reconstituted committee is directed to focus more on pure history and not the built environment, Metatchen will lose that momentum rather than build upon it. I ask that the committee's role in historic preservation be strengthened more than it appears to be in the draft ordinance. I would also like to make a comment related to the experience that Pete and I had when working on 443 Middlesex. Working on the committee and with the council, and I know that the council has concerns about historic preservation in regards to the borough telling people what they can and cannot do with their property. What Pete and I experienced during our renovation is that the municipality does find ways to emphasize your priorities. For example, as part of our review process that we went, Pete and I went through, we were asked to pre-wire for the installation of an electrical vehicle charging station. This is not required by building code, certainly not part of preserving the historic house, but it's your way of saying you support alternative energy sources. We were required to create one bike storage per unit, preferably indoors. This is not required again by building code, but it's your way of supporting Metatchen as a walkable, bikable, if there's such a word, community. For our landscaping, we were required to only use native species to plant multiple trees and of course, to not take down any existing trees. Again, these are your ways as a leadership of supporting worthwhile goals. And by the way, we did honor all those even if they weren't strict requirements. My point is that you do, through your policies and ordinances, support goals that you believe are important. I will continue to encourage the borough and the committee to find ways to make historic preservation one of those goals. One suggestion, for example, is when council designated in 2020 the entire borough as an area in need of rehabilitation, there was discussion that municipalities can use this program to financially incentivize the preservation of historic buildings. Metatchen never developed that part of the program, and by the way, it's too late to benefit 443 Middlesex, but perhaps the administration, in conjunction with the advisory committee, could reconsider the program. In conclusion, I do have two requests. First, strengthen the role of historic preservation in the committee's title and purposes in order to make a clear statement that Metatchen values its historic built environment. And second, as part of the upcoming review that you plan to do of the municipal master plan, that the borough should review steps that it can take to strengthen Metatchen's commitment to historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zerby. Any other comments on this ordinance?
Tom Brinkerhoff, 658 Middlesex Avenue. I'm a, I grew up in Metatchen. I went to Metatchen High School. My wife and I moved back to Metatchen because of its strong sense of community and belonging. And I'm really excited about this ordinance because I think something that Metatchen does really well is it looks to its future, but also shines a spotlight on its past in a way that many towns and municipalities don't. I think the timing of this is so apropos for the 125th birthday, the video of which on YouTube was simply epic. If anyone hasn't seen it, it's really, really great. I think the borough really should be commended for highlighting historical figures in a way that I think is really meaningful. Thomas Peterson, for example, in naming the park next to Estercades, I think is incredibly commendable in a way that the borough is shining spotlight on its history. And also I think there's so many stories that can be told through this ordinance on the borough's history, from historical figures to the way the borough got its nickname of the Brainy Borough. And I think all of those things make our quality of life incredibly strong and make this such a meaningful community and one that has such belonging, not just in our present, but in our past. I want to thank the council for this focus on its history.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkerhoff. Appreciate that. Other comments? Couldn't tell if Mr. Dyken was getting up himself or just getting up for Mr. Brinkerhoff. Any other comments? I appreciate this very much. You know, this is a conversation that stemmed from the 2000, my mayor's message on New Year's Day where we talked about our goals for the year and we talked about expanding the role of the Historic Preservation Committee. I want to be very, very clear, at least as mayor, and I don't get a vote unless there's a tie on these things, but I absolutely believe in historic preservation, speaking for myself. And I think most of the council members, at least maybe all the council members, I don't want to speak for them, but do as well. The goal of this committee was never to diminish preservation. The goal of this committee is to add purposes to make sure that we are doing more to address our history. You know, we have incredible amounts of knowledge and resources in this community. The resources aren't just, you know, the first mayor's top hat in gavel, but this is not the first mayor's top gavel, by the way, you know, but the things that the historic, the Metatchen Edison Historical Society has. But the resources, and this partially addresses Ms. Zerby's comments, are also these structures that we have throughout town, these historic, beautiful and meaningful structures that we have throughout town. And so in addition to preserving as many of them that we possibly can, understanding that, you know, and there's that issue about the ones that exist on private property and we have difficulty doing that without a specific ordinance that is particularly strict from the state, and that's been something that is still under consideration from this council, as I understand, because the master plan has got to address that and Mr. Cosenza's here, who's doing some work on our behalf as our planner on the master plan. But I just thought that it was really important for our community to, in addition to working on preservation, again, in addition to working on preservation, that we did what we could to try to add other purposes. You know, the committee and commissions work, it's not just this one. And Ms. Zerby served, how many years, 16 you said? That's incredible. I mean, I don't know how many people recently have served that long on, maybe in our history, although I don't know our records. How many?
14.
14, okay. We have members of our committees and commissions that have served many, many years and there's two great examples of that. But there are, there are some months where there isn't much to work on because not everything's going on all the time. And so I just thought maybe we could add a purpose so that we can focus on other elements of history. That was the intention. That's, that's the intention of what we tried to do here. And I'm going to turn this over, if I can, to Vinita Jethwani, who's the, you know, the liaison currently to this currently named Historic Preservation Committee that obviously is being proposed to change its name, but not, you know, to have an added purpose, not a, not a swapped-out purpose, if you will. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I just want to commend the members of the committee because I've seen a real interest and excitement among those members on some of this, you know, expanded focus and some of the exciting things that we can do already. And this has just been a couple of months that I've been the liaison to that committee. So I think I would just reiterate, you know, what you said that, and what I've, you know, tried to convey in those discussions is that this really is an ability for us to look broadly at various aspects of the rich history of this town, of this borough. And I, I believe there is a lot of interest in, in some of the ideas, some of those that you mentioned previously, Mayor, but also new ideas coming forth from the members of the committee that will be, you know, shared with you, obviously, and others. So I'm, I'm very hopeful to be able to have this type of broadening. And I'm hearing that from other members of the committee as well.
Can I ask, and I want to say this maybe on behalf of the concern that was raised, which is a legitimate concern. Like if we were abandoning preservation as a, as a borough, that would be a real concern and something that I certainly wouldn't support. But has, has the conversation within the committee emphasized preservation in addition to historic purpose?
Yeah, it has definitely, it has definitely, there's definitely been interest to retain that element of, of interest of the committee. I think it's just what I, what I've heard is that not to the exclusion of every, everything else that could be comprised here.
One of the things that I was told, and maybe council president, again, I apologize for any of you bringing you on the spot, but just having this discussion in public is important, there's serious concern, in a good way on this, is are there, when we had some, some discussions about the possibility of approaching the concept of a preservation ordinance in this borough. And it was, it was, you know, a difficult conversation. It brings up all kinds of issues and many towns throughout New Jersey have had that debate. I mean, Mr. Candell has addressed this with us many, many times as the liaison previously to the committee. The council president and I have discussed this as well. We, we decided to talk about the consideration of this in the context of the master plan process. Can someone, it doesn't have to be anyone in particular, address that and how we intend to review that, a part of the, part of the aspect of the process? Maybe, I mean, I, again, Mr. Cosenza is here for the arts district piece and Mr. Cosenza's been working really hard lately on behalf of Metatchen. Would you like to address that, would you be able to address that now? If not, it's okay. Again, I want to make sure that you're prepared.
Probably not to dissatisfaction of the council, but I think the master.
Well, you can give us the Reader's Digest version if that's okay. It doesn't have to be a well-researched, it's just the, from your experience. How would, how would we review the process of historic preservation, for example, in the master plan discussion?
Well, typically like with any ordinance, you have to make sure it's consistent with your master plan. So we recently did do a, I believe it's the Historic Preservation Plan Elements in 2021. Since we are doing a master plan update for, over the course of the next year, this is our opportunity to review that effort, even though it was only four years ago, to really see if there's any additional goals or objectives we want to add that might build support for a future amendment. So again, I don't think that really answered your question, but I think now is the perfect time to really look at the master plan.
Well, so where are we with the master plan process? Because I know we've approved it, we put, obviously we've staffed it now, we've got, we're ready, we're getting ready to go. So where, where, I mean, so just, I'm not going to hold anybody to timelines, but where are we with the master plan process now?
We are in infancy stages. I should be hopefully having a kickoff meeting within the next few weeks.
Next few weeks, you said?
Sorry.
You said in the next few weeks?
Next few weeks.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Cosenza, just to ask you a question. In connection with the reevaluation process, particularly with respect to historic preservation and other things, I guess, the community would have a chance to air its, its concerns or what it wants out of a housing preservation ordinance or whether or not one should be part of the master plan, correct?
Yes, generally speaking, as part of the scope that was approved by council a few months ago, the plan was to have a community engagement session in addition to having the science fair method that we've been using the last few years for the community engagement for the master plan. We also plan to have an online survey as well as specialized surveys for students, parents, senior center, whatnot. I think that's the perfect opportunity to gauge the public's opinion on historic preservation. The key is frankly, is the phrase that questions correctly so that they know what they're answering. I just want to make sure we're not putting the wool over people's eyes, make sure we're asking the questions right.
In the process of a master plan, and I remember participating in the master plan process when I first moved to town, you know, 20 or so years ago, participating in a, in a, in a meeting on the master plan. And then we had, I think we've had one since then, so we've had two over the last 20 or so years. Is that right?
Yes, you had a master plan, they call reexamination reports. The last one we did was 2016. Every 10 years we have.
And by the way, just to be clear, for those of you who aren't, you know, local government experts, and most people aren't, the, the master plan process is like, is a real opportunity for communities to take, to take stock of who they are. And it's incredibly important. I mean, we always talk about public input and how important it is, but this is the most, one of the most important things that you can participate in as a member of a community like ours because it, it becomes the constitution, if you will, for how you progress until the next one it comes about or it's amended. And so this is really important. Historic preservation, not to diminish it at all because it's important to all of us, but in addition to historic preservation, it's almost every other topic you can possibly imagine about what you do in your community. So it's really, really an important process. And as we embark in it more, we'll have many, many opportunities for people to, to provide their input.
Yes. I would say the last time we had a real master plan was 1983 and before that was 1959.
Okay. So this is the first, this is the first full one since 1983?
The first full one with actual community engagement since 1983.
Okay. Because I remember being part of it, I guess it was an amendment.
I think what you're referring to are specialized projects for the downtown development district. And then we've obviously had green print, the arts district.
Well, that I remember because I was hitting the spot. But yes, thank you. Okay. Excellent. So thank you. Any other council members with comments or questions on this particular ordinance? We got, we got sidetracked because of my suggestion about the master plan, but the master plan's important element of what we're trying to do on preservation. Anything else?
I just want to thank council member Jethwani for helping me translate a couple sentences in the mayor's New Year's Day post into an actual ordinance that well researched and pulled from a number of other communities and, but also, you know, written towards Metatchen specifically. So it was really great working with you. So thank you.
You know, you write these things with the best of intentions and then sometimes people think that you're trying, you know, I'm just want to assure people who are at all concerned and this is designed to support preservation and just the general history of Metatchen because we think that there's opportunities for special education and projects throughout town that are, you know, consistent with the efforts and goals at that moment right now, for example, 125th birthday and 250th anniversary of the United States.
Yeah. May.
Can I just say one more thing tonight?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased to hear the conversation and that the intent is to build upon and not desert, so to speak, and leave preservation. But I still would ask one thing of you is ask you to look at the ordinance. I mean, now that's the case. Looking at the wording in the ordinance, it would be possible to lose preservation for it to get hidden in terms of dispure history. So I'm just respectfully asking, since we, many of us on the committee put many years into preservation and trying to build something here, if there's any chance of a few more P-words in there, in the preservation there, it would mean a lot to us who've served on the preservation committee. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate the comment and I think that, I don't vote unless there's a tie in this borough form of government, but I'm going to suggest based on this, there's no imminent reason, the committee can still work on it as intent of the council. And I know that you, council member Jethwani and council president Delia have worked hard on this, but let's maybe take one more look at it to see if the goals can be met by the community objectives. Go ahead, council president.
If I may, I mean, we, we're going to be reexamining it as far as the master plan. If coming out of that master plan reexamination, there's a real possibility that we might establish a legitimate historic preservation committee.
Ordinance. Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Right.
So if I could, my suggestion would be to keep it the way it is with the history advisory committee. If coming out of that master plan rework, we do not end up doing an ordinance, then maybe we can come back and make this stronger for preservation, but I don't see any reason why we would adjust it one way--
Council President, I leave that up to you. Again, and I appreciate the effort. I mean, the most important thing is that we preserve the intent for preservation in here, that we're supplementing, not supplanting that.
Yeah, and Mayor, I will just say that, you know, in hearing this conversation, I certainly, at least in my liaison role, can commit to ensuring that the conversations in those committee meetings are reflecting, you know, the intent--
I think the concern is that, I don't know that there's any particular worry about this particular council in me. I think the worry is that ever our replacements were not as supportive of preservation, that, and at least from Ms. Zerby's most recent comment, and just with 16 years on the, you know, on the board, and I've had many conversations about things with Ms. Zerby before, I respect her opinion, but I want to make sure that, you know, that in fact we are committed to at least revisiting it in the, to the extent that something changes out of the plan, the master plan, the conversation--
Agreed.
Okay. Right, but that's this mayor, you know, and council, C-O-U-N-S-E-L, is pointing out that 10-49I refers to the fact that we have the ability to carry out such other duties and responsibilities as may be assigned from time to time by the mayor and/or borough council, you know. So that's this mayor and borough council, you know. But again, there could be someone who's elected, in theory, who's anti-preservation. I hope that never happens, but we've got to think about not just now, but the future, and I think that's the discussion that we're having now. Is there another comment from the community? Just name and address for the record. Thank you.
Lynda Listella, 242, Janboi. Just previously, in previous responses, Mr. Mayor, you acknowledged the importance of words, and I would just recall that, and the necessity, and the importance, and the weight that the word preservation would have if it were included in that. And again, the arts community feels really strongly about the connection between preservation and the arts. I, as you know, am really firm on that, but yes, the preservation element, the word, I believe, is really important. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Councilmember?
Yeah, before we vote. All right, so from all of the discussion that I've heard, you want to leave the ordinance as it is and then look for something to come out of the master plan? Like, I want to understand what all of that is.
I think the, one of the concerns I know are, and I'm going to speak, I guess I just was having a whispering conversation with our attorney, and one of the concerns is that if we address the concept of preservation too much in the ordinance, that there's some worry perhaps that it would start to read like an illegal historic preservation ordinance because, and establishing a historic preservation commission, because in New Jersey, and I say unfortunately, because we would be there already if the statute allowed us to do something different than this incredibly stringent historic preservation commission concept that the state legislature envisioned in its adoption. We would be there already. We wouldn't be having this discussion. We'd have a historic preservation commission or some version of a commission that was, you know, did require an additional body that's like a zoning board or a planning board, for example, to come together and approve all projects on homes over a certain number of years. And I'm being overly simplistic when I describe it, because the ordinance is much more complicated than that, but our attorney had some problems with the word preservation. So I think, and maybe I'm going to turn it to you, Dennis, if I can, and what are your concerns exactly? As long as you can give them, that's off, by the way, but as long as you can give it in public and it's not something that would reflect attorney-client advice.
Sure, no. The one, the only concern that I would have, just adding, actually, I take that back, there's two concerns if you want to adopt this ordinance tonight. One, changing what's there, I mean, changing the name, adding duties and functions, that would require an amendment to what is, I mean, been published, what has been available to the public. So it would then have to be amended, and then there would have to be another second reading. So that's my one thing relating to that. But adding the word preservation, there is a statutory reference that, I mean, permits a municipality to establish a historic preservation commission. And a historic preservation commission has certain statutory duties as well as authority. My only concern with adding the word preservation to the title is that the public doesn't see the difference between the historic, I mean, preservation advisory committee and what is, I mean, defined by statute.
Well, council, what is the current ordinance?
There is no current ordinance.
There is no current ordinance. Right. So that's the other thing. This was established, I believe, during the Vahala administration, which was, I don't know how many years ago, but it was established sort of at, like-- Ad hoc. Ad hoc, just a random committee that was established, similar to what we did with the Metatchen is America Committee, where we just created it because we wanted to make sure there was a purpose fulfilled. There was never an ordinance in the first place, but now that we're creating an ordinance to reflect what we've been doing and more, we're now doing that, but we're worried that we're going to step into a statutory dynamic that establishes basically a historic preservation commission without properly going through the steps, or whether or not this community in general wants to create a historic preservation commission. So that's what's going on. We're creating an ordinance to clean ourselves up, because we've been doing this for so long, and successfully, at least to the extent that we've been having a committee on preservation, but there was never anything formal when we first looked at it. So that's what's going on here. So I'll leave it up to the council. If we want to adopt this tonight, we can go ahead and adopt this tonight. You guys, you all vote on it, and if there's a majority that supports it, it'll be adopted. This is the second reading, there was a public hearing, but, you know, that's up to you. And ultimately, I think, if nothing else, we know where we all stand on this, and if something comes out of the master plan, then this may have to be amended again to reflect the community's priorities, or don't adopt it, and then we'll be no worse off for, you know, with the way things are currently going. We have committee members, we have a council liaison, and apparently, there's good work being done. So I leave it up to you.
So getting back to my question, so now, so what's the part that could happen with the master plan that would then kind of say, okay, now we want to change it? That's the connection I'm trying to make.
Chris--
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
All right, so I'm trying to figure out, this, the way it is, is a committee, not a commission, so it doesn't really have authority in preservation, okay? So if we pass this now and things go along, but you're now working on the master plan, what can happen in the master plan that would make us come back, or what might not happen in the master plan to make us come back to this ordinance and say, oh, you know, we have to change it now and put in more stuff about preservation, because it's not happening on the master plan side? That's kind of what I'm stuck with.
Chris, do you mind if I try to answer that?
If you want to.
If you dare.
I'll try, so--
Are you sure, Chris?
So if you recall, we, last year, Councilman Candell and I worked really, really hard trying to get us to a point where we had a historic preservation commission that would work, what we felt would work for our community, and--
Just to be clear, it's a historic preservation ordinance that, in which establishes a commission.
Thank you.
Right. Which has powers, as opposed to a committee which doesn't.
And we thought we kind of had a way to get there. We were looking at other communities that had, we thought had done something similar. We got really close, but at the end of the day, it kind of came down to what Mr. Murphy was saying, where we're not able statutorily to do like a historic preservation light, like, we were not able to do that. We would have to move forward with a full-blown historic preservation commission. And that's something that I think this council is open to, but it was not something that, and this is what we had discussed, was something that I felt the community had enough opportunity to weigh in on. So we knew that we were going to be doing the master plan refresh, because we're from 1983, I was three years old at the time. So it was a lot, it was something that was coming up, so we thought that was a perfect opportunity to get, give the community an opportunity, to give us that feedback, to weigh in on what they think about historic preservation, with the idea being to take what they give us and then go from there. Maybe if they're super supportive, I think this council would very much like to, and move forward with that full-blown ordinance.
Okay, so then, if we pass this today, down the line when we're refreshing the master plan, there will be a survey to the community where we could have a discussion about this and have people weigh in whether or not they think that this would be something good for the community.
Yeah, actually, if I may, jumping out, at that stage, you would then pass another ordinance. My guess is you would abolish the advisory committee and then create a historic preservation commission--
Commission, right.
I mean, designated by statute.
That would be like the planning board and the zoning board.
And just to be clear, in the context of what we're talking about, it's historic preservation, but if we're talking about the master plan, there's any number of other issues that could potentially come out of the master plan that could require us to also change other ordinances.
Yeah, because you may also, within your zoning ordinances, make revisions relating to historic preservation, not just the creation of the plan, or the commission, but also certain restrictions and things of that nature.
But just if I may, I mean, it is two separate things. The master plan reevaluation is something separate and different than the ordinance that we're considering tonight, and just my own personal opinion, and I'm not trying to influence anybody, but I think we could maybe take a second look at this ordinance and maybe tweak it a little bit to include some preservation, some P-words, as Ms. Zerby said. But that's my own personal opinion, and, you know, I certainly leave it to the rest of the council to make their own decisions. All right. Any other members of the public? Because I don't think we formally closed the hearing, we were having this discussion. Are there any other comments from the public on this? This is an interesting discussion. Nothing else? Okay, so--
What do we do?
Well, it's up to whether the council president wants to move it, or if somebody wants to move it.
Yeah, I think I, like I brought up before, you know, I think this is, this ordinance is relevant for what your intention was, the mayor. I think there's, we have the master plan reevaluation coming up, where we may actually go forward with something more stringent, for more statutory for preservation, but to give this committee direction and direction on the books, I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-07 on second reading and publish according to law.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, and now we have a roll call from our clerk, Ms. Supan.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes, after getting all the clarity.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
No, after getting all the clarity.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And so that passed four to one, and thanks for that spirited discussion. Council President?
Ms. Supan, would you please read ordinance 2025-08 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-08, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation under the authority of NJES Title 48, Chapter 4, Section 53, for the revision and codification of ordinances for the borough of Metatchen.
All right, just before we open the public hearing on this, I had some feedback from somebody who may or may not be in the audience right now about the importance of explaining some of the stuff that we're doing, and I just, if I can, Ms. Pearlstein, if you can describe what this is about.
Sure, this is long overdue. What it is, is we hire some, a company to go through and look through all of our ordinances that are outdated, that we haven't gotten to, to reclassify, and if they're outdated, they pull them. It's a whole, most communities do this on occasion. Ms. Supan, have we ever done this before?
Apparently not in close to 20 years.
Yeah.
So it's been a while.
So it was time to do a looksee, and it's really housekeeping, and it's important housekeeping to make sure that our codes are up to date with any state legislative changes, et cetera. So that is what this is. And you're allowed, because it's a major undertaking, to fund it through a special emergency appropriation over five years.
Okay, that's helpful. Now, we're going to open a public hearing on ordinance 2025-08. Anyone wishing to comment on this? I don't think there are going to be as many opinions on this, but maybe I'm wrong, that's the last one. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on 2025-08.
Mayor, I make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-08 on second reading and publish according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance introduction. Ms. Supan, would you please read ordinance 2025-09 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-09, calendar year 2025, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, Council President?
I'd like to make the move that ordinance 2025-09 be passed on first reading, published according to law, in a public hearing set down from Monday, May 12, 2025.
Thanks, this is an introduced ordinance. I suppose the others were second readings, so there's no public hearing for this one. There will be at the next council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and just what is this about, Ms. Pearlstein, if you don't mind, quickly?
This is housekeeping. We do this every year. It's just part of our, part of budgetary stuff that we do. I don't know if Becky wants to add anything or has anything. It's just housekeeping. We do it every year.
That's fine.
Finance officer, it is housekeeping. The appropriation cap is a statutory limit that I believe was from 1977. What they give you, the opportunity, there's a percentage stretch you can use. You pass this ordinance so that you have the ability to have the appropriations in your budget to the most allowable statutory amount. Anything you don't need or don't use in a particular year, you're allowed to bank and then use, if you need, for your appropriations in your budget for the next couple of years. So it is very straightforward, very common, and very ordinary as part of your regular budget process.
Okay, that's helpful. And with that, we have the second, and so I'm going to ask the clerk for the roll call vote at this point, again, on the first reading of this ordinance.
Okay, Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, and now we have one that I know that there's some people in the audience here for, because I've had specific discussions with some of you about this. Council President?
Ms. Supan, would you please read ordinance 2025-10 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-10, ordinance of the borough of Metatchen adopting an amended redevelopment plan for the expanded arts district within the borough of Metatchen, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
Okay, I'd like to move that ordinance 2025-10, be passed on first reading, published according to law, in a public hearing set down from Monday, May 12, 2025.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, this is a particularly exciting one, because this is the next step in the advancement of the Metatchen Arts District. This is essential for getting the theater ultimately built, although many building blocks in that process, this is one that was not easy to get to, just to let you know, the process that we got to, but we're here, and this is the first step since the meeting where we had the concept of the arts district plan presented by Devco and our planners. And with that, any comments from anyone? What's that?
Nothing from me.
Okay, nothing? Okay, so we have a motion, there's a second, and clerk with the roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Tricky there.
Suspense. Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're excited for that, and that's going to be, so there's going to be a planning board meeting on this on May 7, which is a special planning board meeting, because that's what we just did. The ordinance was adopted as a first reading, which means it'll now be sent to the planning board on May 7, right?
Technically, we didn't do it yet until the communications.
Okay, we'll get there. But understand, there's a next step that is the week after next on this, but we'll get there in a second. So I don't want to jump the gun.
And Mayor, may I just ask a question? With all of the discussion we've been having, we've had lovely discussions today, did we do the approval of the minutes and the consent agenda? Did it like whiz by me with all of the discussion? Okay.
We did.
We had so much lively discussion going on.
We're trying to keep everybody awake here.
I know.
Okay. These have been good discussions. Okay, municipal budget, council president?
Ms. Supan, could you please read the 2025 municipal budget by title only?
Municipal budget for the Borough of Metatchin, County of Middlesex, for the calendar year 2025.
Thank you. I moved that the municipal budget for the calendar year 2025 be passed on first reading, published according to law, on a public hearing set for Monday, June 9, 2025.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. All right. Okay, this time we're going to go to reports of council members. Council President, you have anything?
I know we're an hour and a half in here. I do actually have a report, and it's kind of long for me. I'm sorry. And it starts with actually Councilmember Hyman's report, who was not able to attend today. So she'd like to let everyone know that the Parade Commission, Committee rather, is excitedly planning for the Memorial Day. Memorial Day Parade was a kickoff from where to place and head to the Plaza starting at 10:00 a.m. on Monday, the 26th of May. If you're, but if you belong to a group who would like to participate, please go to the Parade Commission page on the Borough website to fill out the registration form. And their next meeting is Tuesday, May 20, at 7:15. And the next cares committee meeting is Thursday, May 8, at 7:15 here at Borough Hall. And the next Board of Health meeting will be Wednesday, May 14, 7:30 at Borough Hall. For my report, from the MDA, May 4 through the 10 is National Small Business Week, so we're just encouraging everyone, as always, but especially during that week, to come out and shop downtown, support local. And then at the end of May, we're starting to get into some of our downtown events. Downtown Pre-Prom is going to be on May 23, which is, happens every year. It's a really great event for kids to come and walk the red carpet and get some photos before their prom. And that's happening on the Plaza. We have a bunch of new businesses that are coming soon. We have one that just had their ribbon cutting with the Friends of Metatchin Arts. We have another coming up this weekend, KB Kitchens and Baths. And then a number of other businesses are working their way and hoping to open as soon as they can, including Laura Ceramics, Fresh Twist, Duke Steakhouse, Honey Stash. FK Living is expanding, and there's more to come that we're not yet ready to announce, but we're really excited about. On our consent agenda, and I believe the mayor posted a social media post before this meeting about the liquor license that was being held by Cometa Fresca. I just wanted to take a second to thank the mayor for helping to facilitate that, that transfer. Cometa Fresca and Whole Foods, you know, they don't necessarily operate a ton of businesses with liquor licenses in New Jersey, so they don't necessarily understand the liquor license laws here and how a municipality, how important those liquor licenses are to a municipality's economy. So when I was able to find out that Cometa Fresca was not intending to reopen, the mayor, through our contacts, was able to get in touch with them and really express that to them and how important this is. And I think the mayor may have a few words as well during your report, so I'm not going to say too much more than to thank you for helping make that happen. Campbell Elementary School's been doing a bike brigade, which is like a bike bus, and it's being run by a fourth-grade teacher, Mr. Yak. He did it once in March, and he, the next, I'm sorry, in April, and the next one is coming up on the 4th, which is this Friday. They're doing it every first Friday of the month during the school year. It's really fun. The kids, they meet at one central location, and then they bike, stopping at various other spots to Campbell Elementary School. Gets them out, gets them active, gets their brains going before the school day. And it's really, it's something that happens across the country and probably across the world, honestly, with these bike buses. And I'm really excited that Mr. Yak took the initiative to get that going, and that's supported by the administration and the PD. Keep Middlesex Moving has some bike rodeos coming up, one's on May 21. That's at Campbell Elementary School from 9:30 to 1:00. June is another happening here in town on June 1 at the Halsey Street Lot from 10 to 1. Check out Keep Middlesex Moving and keep an eye on the Borough's social and website for more information as we get closer to those dates. Sorry, two more. I just want to remind everyone that we have a primary election coming up on Tuesday, June 10, and vote-by-mail ballots, if you're a vote-by-mail person, have already started arriving. In fact, I just dropped my ballot here at the ballot box right before this meeting, so our ballot box is open, our drop box is open, it's outside Borough Hall, just like it's always been for the last few years. If you need any information about registering to vote, you can find that from our website. Just go to our Borough website, go to residents and voter information, you'll find ways to register, request a mail ballot if you want, update your party affiliation, find out info on early voting, Tuesday, June 10. It's important, you know, for our democracy here. So finally, the nice weather, I know, I'm sorry. So we're having some nice weather now, coming at the end of April, going into May, and a lot of people are starting to walk. And something that I've noticed in at least my area is a lot of streetlights that are out. And it's so easy to report streetlight outages with PSCNG. In fact, I just did it last night, because there was two lights on my street. You just go to PSCNG, Google PSCNG streetlight outages, the first thing that comes up. And they've actually updated, it's been a couple of years since I've reported one. You used to have to like go out and get the poll number, and then go and type in the poll number, and make sure you copied it down right and typed it in right. They don't have that anymore. It's just a map. It's a Google map. All the polls are pinpoints on the map. You click the poll that you're trying to report, fill out your name and info, and it gets, it gets sent right away. And they literally came out this afternoon and fixed them both. So it's super fast, it's super easy, PSCNG streetlight outages. It makes walking way safer for everyone in our community, and yeah, please go and do that if you see any lights out. And I apologize for the long message.
That's great. I appreciate it. Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, unlike some others, I'm going to keep my remarks brief, but...
I love the long remarks.
I know. I want to encourage people to take advantage of the reduced rates at the pool this year. The early registration period expires on May 26, so you still have at least a couple of weeks to do that, and I think tomorrow it's going to be in the 80s. So pool weather is coming up. And as far as the concessions at the pool, I know there was a post on social media today. We made every effort possible to secure a concession vendor for the upcoming pool season, and even explored the possibility of having a vending machine vendor provide food and drinks and ice cream and vending machines, but there was no interest in either opportunity. So as a result, there will be no concession operator at the pool this season. And so you'll be able to bring your own food, water, and soft drinks, and just food, water, and soft drinks. And you, we will also have the ability to, of course, order in from a, you know, food delivery service like Uber Eats or DoorDash. And I think we're also, I think, Ms. Pearlstein, we discussed having maybe a cubby at the entrance of the pool to have those deliveries be dropped off and picked up by pool patrons. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, council member. Councilmember Jethwani?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of updates from the library. Just to note that the library's strategic plan has been finalized and will be discussed at their upcoming May 13 Board of Trustees meeting. We had great participation from the community for this effort, so really thanks to you all for being involved in that. We last, the Friends of the Metatchin Library completed their National Library Week fundraiser and raised over $3,100, which exceeded their $2,500 goal. The funds they raised will be used for Bluetooth speakers, improving the storytime collection for children's storytimes, decor for the teen space, and additions to the board game collection for game nights. Continuing the sort of responsiveness of the library to some of the comments they got from the strategic plan survey, they are now offering stroller parking at the library starting from May, Monday, May 5. So there'll be designated spaces for strollers on either side of the alcoves on the Middlesex Ave entrance, so close to the elevator, close to the children's room, to make it easier for our youngest residents to participate in library activities. And then finally, just want to mention the upcoming Cornerstone Jazz Series. It will be TK Blue Presents Planet Blue on International Jazz Day, which is April 30, and it will be held in the community room from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Janboi?
Okay. So last Friday, the Shade Tree Commission celebrated Arbor Day by planting two linden trees at the First Presbyterian Church in front of their social hall. And also, the annual proclamation was read between the first and second tree being planted. And they're going to make a beautiful addition to the landscape there. On May 14, the senior commission is going to be having their meeting at 4:00 p.m. at the center. So of course, the public is welcome to join us. And also, check the Borough website for schedule of activities. And when we were talking before about people's longevity on commissions, as of last year, we had at least two or three members that had been on the senior commission for over 30 years. They're not on, they stepped off last year, but there were two or three members that were on that senior commission for over 30 years. And the Environmental Commission is going to have their meeting May 21 at 7:00 p.m. at Borough Hall. And I would also like to note that there are two members on the Environmental Commission for over 20 years and even perhaps over 25 years. And of course, not to be last here, I'm encouraging people to support the First Presbyterian Food Bank. We just had, you know, some major holidays go by where lots of goodies were given out to people so they could celebrate their holidays properly. And so we need to replenish, so canned meats, canned fish, canned fruit, pasta, sauces, anything you could think of that, you know, you'd like to eat every day, these people would also like to eat every day. And that's my report.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Branch?
All right. At the risk of setting bad precedent, when Tyler said he'd be short, Councilman Candell, I timed you. It's a minute and 17.
Let's go.
Okay.
Beat it.
All right. Now? All right, Metatchin Arts Council, update their first pline air. Pline or pleen?
Plan.
Plan. Third one, okay. Air Painting Day will be Sunday, May 18. That's noon until 3:00 p.m. at Tommy's Pond, so this will be the first time in the year that they do this. Second time overall, so setting up a good, a good tradition here. Local artist and teacher Ed Wetzel will be on hand to assist. And for the Recreation Commission, had a great Metatchin egg hunt that I unfortunately missed. It was on April 13 at Metatchin High School, so they made their way through construction and got back to that field. And roughly 14,000 filled eggs were grabbed in record time by the Borough's youngest members, so congrats to them. Special thanks to the Fire Department Easter Bunny for their assistance. And Human Relations Commission, subcommittees are active. We're now getting applications for the annual Williams Scholarship that the HRC does for Metatchin High School students, and that's it. I won. By the look on your face.
I didn't do the timing.
All right. You guys, all right. So...
I still beat you at GoCar. We all know that.
I am, I appreciate Council President Delia's comments about the Whole Foods. It was, dealing with corporate America is not always easy, but they were, to their credit, Whole Foods was very open to the idea. They were very interested in hearing why it's such a big deal to us. We explained New Jersey's stringent liquor license rules and why wasting it, if you will, on a place that barely is open, if at all, is something that is of concern to us. Then they, they asked whether they could just lease it in the current space to someone else, and we said, you know, we'd really prefer if you just sell it to someone on the open market, because that will help us to sort of bring, you know, some economic growth and some potential and opportunity somewhere else, and they honored that, too. So we really appreciate this private sale that's occurred. You know, I put this post out there, and I've already been contacted by all these people saying, hey, I want to buy the liquor license, and it has nothing to do with us other than the fact that we were able to usher in the shake-it-free, if you will, from Whole Foods, who would have probably had it for another 10 years, just sitting there. Who knows what they would have done with it had we not brought their attention. But to their credit, again, to Whole Foods' credit, they listened to us, they considered what we had to say. When they said they were going to call us back, they did, and that's something that you don't always get from, from that level. Didn't quite get to Jeff Bezos, but we got pretty high, and they listened to us, so that was really good. Jeff Bezos is not there anymore? Update from our Borough Administrator. Anyway, so that was good. The, I'm going to be going, and I'll just say this for whoever's watching on TV, I'm going to be going to Washington on Thursday morning. I have a series of meetings with our representatives to talk about some of the impact of what we've seen at the federal level, which, you know, has some, some serious concern for people. There are people in our community, some of whom we're very close to, who have lost their jobs. We have people in our community who, who have lost their federal jobs, but they're still being paid and are not permitted to do their jobs because of some of the way that these cuts and executions have, of these, of the, of these directives have occurred. And it's very confusing for people. We have five federal projects that the Borough is actively engaged in. That's well beyond the funding stage, but we've seen in some cases that that doesn't necessarily matter, that the White House tried to freeze all projects at one point, and we, you know, have been told that a court has since, you know, stayed the freeze, if you will. But these are very confusing times, and there's a lot of feedback that I've gotten from residents. And so I'm going to be going on Thursday morning and trying to let our representatives know specifically that, you know, obviously, there's some real concerns from our residents about what's going on, and make sure that they know that we're watching what happens. And if anyone has anything to say or stories to be told, let me know, because I want to make sure that we include whatever we possibly can. You can email me, you can call me if you, you can, you know, certainly share your information, because this is important stuff. And as much as we want to be able to focus on everything that goes on here, the chaos in Washington is palpable.